So, welcome everyone to the May 17th meeting of the Hadley Select Board. We're calling the meeting to order at seven o'clock. And the first order of business is a consent agenda. And on our consent agenda this evening, we have minutes from March 8th, March 15th, and March 29th. We have three or two accounts payable warrant, warrant 1746 and 46A. And we have a payroll warrant 1744. We also have a letter of resignation from Kathy Zaterka, our Park and Rec Program Coordinator. We have a request for reappointment of Edwin Matusko and Angie Morris Friedman, both members of our CPA committee. We have a letter of resignation from Jackie Lipinski, who is the administrative assistant at the Police Department. And then we have a transient vendor Hawker Pedler license application from Brian Galis with Vivint Solar.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second. Any conversation?
Can I, I would just like to say how sorry we're to see you go Kathy. You know, last night I watched the TV thing on Western Mass News that you did about the Zaterka Park. It was tremendous to let the people know what's transpiring with the park and how it's going to evolve in the future, you know, and we're certainly going to miss you and all your dedication that you've put into your job over the years.
Thank you very much.
Much appreciated. Thank you.
Just for clarity of the record that you're acknowledging receipt of the two requests for appointment. You're going to be making those appointments in June?
Correct, yep. So these are, we're just acknowledging receipt of the request.
Yep.
Okay, and are you staying for, we have Park and Rec on the agenda this evening? You staying for that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right, so motion made in second. Is all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
A side note, and Dave, can you explain, I've had people at my house the last couple of days that are requesting information for solar. And I see tonight we have Hawkers license which was issued. One of the people that came to the house did have a, it looked like a pass or something like that, on a belt or something like that. But the other person was simply knocking on the door explaining what they could do to provide electric, uh, solar service to us. What's, what's the rules and regulations regarding Hawkers licenses? And who should we be talking to and who shouldn't we be talking to?
Well, there's a couple of things that are operating here. First of all, if you're making door-to-door sales, there's an opportunity here for those, those sales not to be recorded for tax purposes. So the Hawker Pedler and transient vendor license issued by the town provides a record that, that allows the sales taxes to be collected by the Commonwealth from that transient vendor. So that's one issue, so that we know that someone who's applying for the license and is utilizing that license is complying with the tax laws of the Commonwealth. The other is just a public safety issue, that if you have a door-to-door salesperson who has not been vetted by the Police Department as this license requires, then that's obviously a concern. If, if anybody is approached at their home by someone offering goods for sale, please ask them to demonstrate that they've been in front of the Select Board and have the proper permit. And if not, then I suppose the next call would be to the Police Department Chief. Is that correct?
Yep. And we issue, how do we issue, how is that known? Is there a pass or some type of?
They'll have this, this license with them. There'll be a license issued from our office.
Okay.
Which they're supposed to keep with them at all times.
Just to add to the situation, the Cog requested of me to give them an assessor's copy of everybody that has solar panels in this town. And I haven't done it yet. I don't know how to handle that. You know, if they can go get it themselves, but I don't want to go and request it.
But then you've got, you've got two different kinds. Is it just solar panel for electricity? Or is it going to be solar panels for water?
These are solar panels for electricity. They want to get these people to convert over to them, to sign a new contract with them.
With the Cog?
With the Cog.
Oh, with Hampshire Power.
Hampshire Power.
But they, they asked you as the Hadley representative?
To get the thing from the assessors, but I didn't feel comfortable with doing that.
Probably through Bill, probably through billing permit. Do you need billing permit to put those on your roof, don't you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
David, you have a thought?
But they asked every member to do this for them, for every town. I don't know how to handle that.
I know that the Department of Energy Resources handles, keeps a tab on renewable energy of all types, town by town. And so they would have a list of, of who has what, whether it be a solar panel, or anaerobic digester, or some other renewable energy source. They'll have a complete list of that.
So wouldn't it make more sense for the Cog just to go to?
I would think so.
The DER?
Right.
But apparently there must be an assessed value on solar panels on your tax bill.
Sure, sure, but I'm just thinking just from an efficiency standpoint.
That's what they're looking for, who has them. And they're thinking it'll just pop up in the, you know, the assessor's records, all of them at once on a computer sheet. I don't know.
Yeah.
It would certainly pop up with the building inspector for issuing permits, so.
Yeah, I would, I would go through the building inspector as well. But DOER has this information online.
You could tell them that, too.
Okay, so it isn't something I should be providing them?
Not necessarily.
Then, okay, I'll tell them.
Because they, they have another means of doing it than the DOE.
Okay, all right, thank you.
DOE.
Yeah.
Go.
Okay. Go where? What? Oh, I thought you said go.
No.
That was me.
Okay, Fire Substation and Senior Center update to our?
I got a call today from Jane Evans Smith. She asked me to do the update for the Senior Center, if that'd be okay.
Absolutely.
Council on Aging is holding a public information forum on May 25th. There's actually going to be two forums, one at three o'clock in the afternoon and one at six o'clock. Both of them at Hopkins Academy. The design for the building has been designed. The footprint for the building has been put together. And there may be some additional information that we'll add to the forum. But a lot of work's been done on it and they'd asked people to come in and take a look at it. One of the things that I know they're looking forward to is that a lot of information was provided at town meeting. They didn't think there was enough fresh room, so we made some accommodations for that. So, we're trying to make sure everybody is included. And, and if they have some input onto it, now's the time before the building is built and people move into it to tell us what was right and wrong about it. So if you could make one of them either at three o'clock in the afternoon or six o'clock, that'd be helpful.
What was that date again?
The 25th, May 25th.
Which is?
That's right.
Next week.
It's Thursday, the 25th. It's a Thursday, yeah. Okay. So that's it for the Senior Center?
Well, they're also doing Chicken to Go on June 11th. So I might as well put out there that that's going on. I think there's still tickets available, so.
Okay. And anybody for the Fire Substation?
Fire Substation has not met yet since the last meeting. We're meeting this Thursday, next Thursday night, not this Thursday night.
Okay, so while the Senior Center forum is going on, you're having a Fire Substation meeting?
At six thirty, yeah.
Okay. All right, then on the agenda, we have, let's see. For new business, we have a general strategy and planning session. Do we want to go there, or do we want to go to Park and Rec?
I don't see anybody from Park and Rec here yet. I know it must be.
We got the resignation tonight, but I think we should be a little more sensitive than that.
All right, so I do not see any Park and Rec commissioners here tonight.
And we're expecting that, correct?
Yeah, they're, they're, they're on their way.
All right, so.
They're on their way?
They're on their way.
Did they text you?
They talked to me.
They talked to you?
They talked to me.
Okay, so why don't we go to the general strategy and planning session first? Okay. David, you provided some information for us, right?
Looks like all old.
Old is new, so.
Old is new, okay.
So we've been, we've been very aggressive about looking at our financial strategies, our structures, our processes, our functions for a long time. We've started back in 2008 and 2009 with reports, 2007 actually, going back to our original review of the Sewer Commission, which was an independent body at that time, as well as the Highway and Water Division, which was also handled separately. And we, we received two reports from the Department of Revenue. These are posted online. They're available either through the links provided on the agenda or go to mass.gov and look up the Department of Revenue. The Technical Assistance Bureau published reports as well, right there. They made a number of recommendations, some of which we've implemented. One major recommendation was the unification of the two separate bodies, the Sewer Commission and the Highway Water Commission, into a unified DPW, which we've done. They asked us to codify our bylaws, which we have done, and we've posted those online. We asked that we look at other processes within Town Hall, which we've done quarterly billing for sewer and water, which we've just newly implemented. There remain some issues that are undone. There's work to be done in terms of Treasurer's Office, Collector's Office, Assessor's Office, Select Board. So there are some, still some outstanding goals there. We went back and we asked for a overview of our financial position, which resulted in a report in 2013. Again, we have accomplished a lot of those goals, but a lot of these goals remain outstanding. Some are repeated from the 2007 study. And then finally, we had the report under the Commonwealth Compact about our financial structure, which we've received and we haven't really dug into yet. They make a number of assessments of how well we're doing in terms of a town, particularly a small town facing big challenges. We should feel very good about the things that we've been able to accomplish, the successful OPEB strategy, the policies for financial management, the financial management team, the tri board team, all of these things that we're doing very well. But they see room for improvement. And they, they focus in on IT. They focus in on Finance Director. They focus in on a Human Resources Director. They focus in on the overall charter of the, of the town. You had two members of the Charter Study Commission come and visit with you. Town manager of Foxborough, the town manager of, of Grafton came here and gave us an overview of some of the resources that were freely available through the Managers Association. And then finally, we have, it's linked right here, the Service Delivery Plan, which we prepared last year, which talked about the functions, the essential functions of each department, the overall organization of the town, the way it communicates, the legal basis for each department, as well as the, the funding and the staffing plan for each of those departments. So there's a lot of information that we have here. There are a lot of very clear recommendations about how Hadley has, has opportunities for improvement. And there are a lot of, there's a lot of documented improvements that we've handled, either on our own or by following the recommendations from prior studies. So that's generally the stage where we are. We had a long discussion during the budget process leading up to the annual town meeting about where our deficiencies are, particularly with respect to public safety, IT, financial management, HR management, and, and some of our revenue constraints.
So, what we talked about last time, or at a recent meeting anyway, was coming up with a game plan. And I think we were all in agreement that, that this summer there's an awful lot of work to get done in advance of the special town meeting in the fall. So, taking, you know, David's pointing out there's already an awful lot of information available to us. But then there are many, many, many other things that have come up in our conversations with our finance committee and with the, during the budget process. So, just this morning, I put together, I tried to put together a list to try to put kind of like-kind things into groups so that might facilitate if we're having a Select Board meeting and we want guests to come in and speak with us, that it, it makes sense that we're not with all these, you know, disparate topics going on. So, I'm just going to run down this and then what I was going to do is ask, I just sent it to David this afternoon and he has some thoughts about modifications. And if I could send it to everybody, and then you all chime in. So, for general information, we talked previously about having somebody come in and talk about override options. Again, just an edge, and everything I'm saying, this is for education and fact gathering. This is not recommendation, you know, but this is so that we can then make a decision on how to move forward. So previously, we had talked about having Terry Williams from the DOR and possibly Sandy Poehler, who you had a conversation with, from Arlington, and previously with Amerson. He was willing to come in to educate us on what different types of thing, different types of options there might be in terms of an override. We also should probably follow up on the charter discussion, the whole conversation we had with the folks that came in about a town manager versus a town administrator and what that might look like and whether or not Hadley should be talking about such. We've talked about people-related costs, specifically going through the budget, the significance of certain line items. When, you know, one line item's 1.3 million and another line item's, you know, $20,000, where do you want to spend your time talking? And where might there be opportunity, not only for cost savings, but also trying to mitigate the increase in those line items going forward? So in that regard, we had talked about Joe Shea from the Hampshire Franklin Trust coming in to talk to us about our, our health coverage and how that's operating. Donald had brought that up. Parker Elmore to go through the OPEB valuation. And again, in the process, finding out from them what are best practices across the state and other cities that they're working with. Well, but I mean, it was just about managing the liability itself. One's the funding it, and the other one is managing the liability.
Yeah, I think we're ahead of them on that point.
We had talked about reviewing board stipends. So we have many, many boards that are, or committees that are functioning that aren't being paid anything. You know, Finance Conservation, Municipal Building Committee, School Committee. And then we have other boards, elected boards, that are receiving a stipend. And then there's a very wide range of the amount of meeting that is actually occurring between those boards. So you think about the volume of work that the Planning Board is doing compared to some of the other boards, you know, does this make sense? I mean, how do we want to look at that going forward? And certainly a review of the wage study. I mean, we still have not really knuckled down and taken a look at, at how people are being paid and are there any market adjustments necessary? Or are, in some cases, are people way above market? Then public safety is its own area. We have Fire Department, Police Department staffing requests, and then related capital costs associated with that to dig into. I would like to see us resurrect the conversation about dispatch. Does it make sense to consider regionalizing? And the ambulance contract is under, there's a work group reviewing that. So again, maybe we could kind of look at all of that together. Administrative support, you know, again, from a staffing standpoint, we, we have issues because of the way we're structured. We've talked about administrative support, where someone has 10 hours here, eight hours there, 15 hours there. How do we better manage that pool of resources to everyone's benefit? Human resources is its own category. If we aren't able to hire a human resource manager in the, in the short term, what can we do to bridge ourselves from here to there? Because everybody's in agreement that it's, it's an area of weakness. Information technology, same thing. A needs analysis from a project management perspective, that would result in an actual implementation plan. Town administration and finance. David already touched on the DOR report, Commonwealth Compact, the audit report, and management letters. So digging into the recommendations that have not yet been implemented and deciding where, what direction we want to go in. The Planning Board's been very vocal that we need to be talking about a long-term solution for planning. And then just I have a general category of other. Are there any opportunities for consolidation or outsourcing? Inspections, Assessor's Office, that kind of thing. So, I was just going to shoot this around. And again, what I'm hoping is that if, if we can kind of agree on the content that, and maybe folks could look at it from a prioritization standpoint, what's the most, what are the most important areas to you to talk about? Get it to the Finance Committee as well, so that they can chime in. And then David and I can work on prioritizing our agendas from this point forward. So that's, that's selfishly where I'm going with, with this.
And where are you looking at putting this on your agenda? What point?
So I started working on draft agendas going through the summer. You know, obviously I want to hear from the Select Board what, what your priorities are, what do you think are the most important topics? But just trying to put some sort of calendar structure to this discussion. It's very clear that we're already in the preparation stages for the special town meeting. We need to start working on a framework of putting that together in terms of deadlines for action items and due dates. But also, what are the components of preparation? I, I recommend that we do the public forum because I've heard good things back from the community, even by people who don't attend the public forum. I'm getting good feedback that it's helpful for, for them to have watched the YouTube so that they can walk into town meeting prepared and know what the general issues are. We talked about having some sort of budgetary process that would allow community input into the priorities of the town. And, so there are things that we can start mapping out on a calendar as to how we want to put some sort of shape around this.
I mean, it'd be impossible to try to hit all of, you have one meeting dedicated to all of that, I think. I think we want to break it apart.
I agree, I just, you know, I think if we prioritize them to understand where the priorities are for each individual member and also to understand if we have, if we're working along, for instance, our IT that we got today. I mean, the fact that there's been money in the grant that's been given to us throws that into light years ahead of where we are as trying to fund it. If we have the money, it's available to us now, I mean, that's.
Then you prioritize that up on the list a little bit more.
And it was one of the, it was one of the SWOT analysis things that people were.
Screaming about.
And I think it's the most benefit to every individual in, in Town Hall. Okay, so I mean, those things are kind of easy. Whether the planning, you know, I don't know how, how much we're going to be able to do without getting their input into that. So unless I have their input, I don't, I mean, I hear from Bill, you know, that he's, you know, has a lot going on with the things that he's doing going forward with. And I heard that there's a lot of space constraints. But I also know that we talked about adding a piece of equipment that was going to help them interact between the Inspector's Office and their office. And I don't know how much of an impact that's going to be or if it's going to delace or alleviate some of the pressures that they have on them.
Yep. And that's exactly the thought, Jerry. So if, if, you know, we, we hit one of these areas and we want to invite people in, David and I just want to know so that we can plan, plan ahead and ask them when they're available, so that we can set those, set the agendas. You know, especially going into the summer, because people have vacations and.
So when do you want us to prioritize this and get this information back to you?
Could you do it before the next board meeting?
Which is?
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna, I will email it. Just David wanted to add one thing to it, I think. So, I will email that either tonight or tomorrow morning.
Adam, Chair, you know what I would like to have done? Our tri board is working so well now and it's being attended with a lot of members. And I would like to get a fresh look on the town from our financial advisor, David Eisenthal. Let him look at it without any inside influence. And let him bring it to our next tri board meeting and inform everybody what the situation of our town is. Maybe he'll even suggest our revenues can no longer sustain our operating budgets. And we have to look for an override. But I would rather have somebody independent come in with a fresh look and give us those answers.
Can David Eisenthal play that role, David?
He could only talk about our investment, not our investments, our borrowing.
Our bond rating.
Our bond rating, so, but he would be part of a team who could speak to that issue.
Like Linda and him could work together on that. And there were some other people she was going to get to work, like on a finance committee.
You can have the DOR take a look at our.
With that, too, the DOR maybe. It would seem like a good kickoff meeting where we could all be informed by these people.
Yeah.
Probably in a couple of years.
And I, but I, maybe the night that Terry Williams comes in, if we could have David Eisenthal there as well. Right, and I mean, because that's good, because you, there are really two different perspectives, too. And sometimes people say, oh, well, that this is an absolute fact. And it's like, well, not from this person's perspective, like you're saying.
Your list is great, and I like your idea. But I would like, you know, the initial phase to start. And then maybe we could get some prioritizing out of your list, which is the most important areas that we have to concentrate on in a systematic fashion.
Yep, and this was compiled from really all of our conversations during the.
It was this afternoon, this real quick, I understand. But there's a lot, you have everything on there that needs to be looked at, there's no doubt. But how we do it in the systematic way we do it is what we have to organize, I guess.
How we prioritize.
Yeah, exactly, Joyce.
And what are we looking for, for override things? I mean, you know, what is it? I know the Fire Department's looking for an override.
School Department?
The School Department's looking for?
Well, they, don't forget their request was several hundred thousand higher than what was actually.
But it was, came in at much less than that. So I, I was hoping that they found a means to an end with financing some of it.
Only short-term. They made that clear, yeah.
I didn't, I didn't see that memo.
That was in the conversation with Annie, yeah.
And you still have to take into consideration what we've already asked the townspeople and what they've already voted on. So I mean, getting this word out right now is like cringing some people.
You know the library's coming in, they're going to be looking for an override.
I know, yeah, exactly.
I mean, they're coming forward to. So I think.
Well, they're not going to look for an override, they're going to look for a.
Dead exclusion.
Dead exclusion, thank you.
As a board, I think it's our responsibility to put everything on the table.
Exactly.
And when the people make the vote, we've done our job.
Right.
I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, I'm just saying that this is a tough time right now to be bringing this up or whatever, but we have to do it.
Well, and I, and again, I mean, I think if we're putting everything on the table, it, everything needs to be on the table and fully vetted before we ever ask the taxpayers for another nickel of, of, you know, a tax rate increase. And that's why I think it's so important that we roll through all of these other areas and say, is this of paramount importance? Do we really need these staffing changes, capital equipment, whatever it is? And is there anywhere else we can look to even partially fund some of it to mitigate that impact of a potential tax increase?
Or maybe we're doing something wrong, maybe just cut their taxes.
You saw Wythe, right? Did you want to finish that statement, or you want to just leave it out there?
Ah, you turned around, jumped right after me.
Okay, so that their taxes, or they're paying less for their garbage disposal. So they're going to dime off on their taxes. I mean, it looks great on paper, but, but that's the truth. I read that, I was a little concerned myself.
Well, someone just proposed an override and it went to the voters and they denied it.
That's correct.
And Southampton went for an override a little over a hundred thousand. But it's got, they got it at town meeting, but now it's got to go before the voters. And we'll see the aftermath of that also, you know, and.
So I mean, the residents expect us to do our homework before we get up.
I think so.
So, so that's what this is about. Okay, so, so David and I will shoot this list out. And then, if you could, again, you know, priority and please feel free to.
Add to others.
Add, delete. And would everybody be comfortable, just in the spirit of time, can I send it to the Finance Committee at the same time?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, all right.
Is that going to be on May?
31st.
31st? We have a meeting on the 31st?
You know, just a way to reflect back, you know, as a board. I know myself, I thought maybe out of those nine ballot questions, maybe three or four would make it. And I was astonished when all nine passed, you know. So, I guess the education process is a big factor, educating people of the situation and why it's put before them.
Yeah.
You know, and I think that's got to be done. And it was done properly the last time and they accepted it.
So I, I think if we get feedback, at least for next week's meeting, David and I could take a first pass at starting to schedule some of these things in.
We don't have a meeting on the 31st.
Right, I think it's the first week of June.
It's the 24th, we have one on the first week of June.
David, you want to say something?
Yeah, just one of the big pieces that are, that's moving around out there is the library grant.
Yep.
We'll find out in July as to whether they receive that grant. And if they did, how much it's going to be, what is their, the state's match going to be? Linda, David Eisenthal, and I had a conversation about scheduling some real hard budget discussion in July, like second week of July. So, just want to let you know that that would be a good time to be talking about the overall financial picture.
So maybe that's when we try to get the DOR and, yeah, that makes sense.
When was the last report we got from the DOR that was prior to me getting back on the board?
Oh, that's been a while.
Two thousand and.
We had a man too, remember?
I'm sorry.
Years ago we had him, I didn't know if the DOR done a recap again?
Yeah, no, June, isn't that June two thousand thirteen?
A recap?
Yeah, it was probably three years ago.
No, it's just, isn't this, isn't it right here?
Yeah.
June two thousand thirteen.
That wasn't for the whole town though, was it?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
So we're four years out.
Yeah.
If you don't count the one that they just did for us.
In two thousand thirteen.
Two thousand sixteen.
Sixteen.
Yeah, the Commonwealth Compact was done by the Department of Revenue.
Oh, yeah, we're looking at, I think of that separately.
Right.
I think this was the original DOR report.
Correct.
Yeah, and then, right, and some of the same recommendations, yeah. Okay, so is everybody comfortable with that then?
When's our next meeting choice? Did you say it was the twenty fourth?
Next week, next week. We have the thirty first off.
Because we're marching, we'd be exhausted.
I suppose it makes sense to work on your list and try to get as much information as we can before we schedule a tri board meeting.
I think so. And certainly the tri board meeting, definitely want to schedule for the, when we do have Terry Williams and.
We do have a buy always.
Yeah, and the finance committee sounds like they're planning on coming.
Group those people together and that would be the next tri board meeting? That would make sense.
You know, mall, even if the school's got a little input, get it over them too. School committee and their reps can come in at the tri board meeting with their thoughts.
Should probably have the schools, actually, I didn't even have the schools on here.
How many meetings have they had since the new elections, Donald?
One.
The what? How many meetings has the school committee had since the election?
Monthly, once a month they only meet.
So they just had one?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we'll copy it to Annie, to Annie McKenzie. And Heather Clutch is the new chair, correct?
Yes.
Yep. All right, so like a plan?
Finance committee got any comment or input?
You're good so far, okay.
So when do you want this back, by next week?
Yeah, if we could before.
Can't we just bring it with us? Do you want it written back to you?
Only, only because if we were actually trying to schedule people in, but that's fine.
We know, we already know we want you to, I am assuming because the rest of the board's spoken interest in having those first two you mentioned. So financial people in first and then go from there.
Well, what David was saying is it probably makes sense to hold off and have them come in in July when we have more known information about the library grant and the like. So we probably do some of these other things.
So library doesn't get their grant, I mean, it completely changes the picture.
All right, we were talking about ranking this, how, what kind of ranking do you want so everybody's on the same page with some type of system?
Yeah, I think the ranking would be.
One to five?
Yeah, just prioritize like in terms of what you think absolutely positively needs to be.
One being the most or five?
One being the most important, yeah. And David.
Could format that too, please, if, if when we get the thing, if we could format it based on these ten things provided us with a one through five, so everybody's working off the same sheet, please.
Okay, and David, the area that you wanted added.
I characterized it as a logjam.
Yeah.
That there are, there are parts, parts of the town that, that could either operate more smoothly or communicate more effectively.
So operational efficiencies.
Operational funding, communication.
Yep.
That I think that we need to address in order to go to the taxpayers and say that we're handling your money and your organization the most effectively as we can.
Okay. Sounds good, okay, so I will do that, I'll do that tonight actually because I'm going to be leaving early tomorrow, okay? All right. Park and Rec, welcome.
We have a copy of a resignation letter that was submitted by Sarah Palmizano, so we want to officially recognize that.
For commissioner, yeah.
Park and Rec Commissioner, yes. So have you seen a copy or are you aware of that?
We haven't.
Okay, so we want to officially acknowledge that. We also have a letter of interest and intent from Marion Noonan that was submitted.
To downstairs, right, to the town hall?
So we just wanted to get all that on the record and find out about that transition.
How does this work?
Yeah, how does this work?
How does it work? It's governed by Massachusetts general law that whenever you have a vacancy on a body where you have elected officials, you have to send a notice to the select board in the thirty days of the creation of the vacancy which happened. Select board has to give one week's notice and then the two bodies get together and by roll call vote, they, they elect the person from whatever submissions they have.
Has the one week's notice been notified?
No, we haven't, we've just begun, we've just received the notice from planning board, so we have to give the notice of one week.
Park and Rec.
Park and Rec, sorry.
If we acknowledge that this evening and we have a meeting next Wednesday, we'd be able to vote on it next week.
You can.
Okay.
And then the term is for, is it a two year or?
I think it's.
Finishing out.
It's about a kins.
Kins.
One year, right?
Yeah, one year. So, so one full year, one more full year, okay.
Yeah, to the next election.
Okay.
Are we required to advertise that opening like on the television, local television station in case there's other people out there that are interested? There may be people that don't know there is a vacancy.
That's, that's it, it's an elective position and so in, in light of the fact that we can't have an election between now and next Wednesday, we have to give at least some sort of notice. That notice would be posted on the, on the bulletin board downstairs. Obviously, it's being broadcast by television to the viewers right now, so that's all you have to do, but you do have to give notice so in case there's somebody who's interested.
Acknowledge and let's do that, but we had an election in April, at that point in time was one person involved, we have a person that wants to do it now, so.
Right.
I'm glad, I'm glad you stepped up and thank you. Let's go forward with the process.
Just the process, I'll be happy to do that for you.
So we'll put it on the agenda again next week?
Yep.
Same thing.
Yeah, and so it will be a posted, posted meeting of the Park and Rec Commission and the Select Board and by roll call vote, you choose the person to fill the vacancy.
If I'm the only one here, like if he can't be here, how does that work?
You carry plenty of juice for me. I can give you that vote in absentia.
Are you available by cellphone, are you local or?
Yeah, can you do remote participation?
Oh, no. No, he's out of the country, okay.
When you leave?
Can, well, can we, I mean, is there, is it urgent or can we, if?
Yes, I mean, we have our programs coming up for the summer, so, I mean, they're already planned. They're planned, but we also have your resignation, so we want to start moving forward with things as the Park and Rec Board would need to get going with.
Okay, I was, the only reason I was asking, I was wondering if we could wait until the week Andy's.
He's not here the following week either.
Still, oh, so I'm sorry.
Because I was kind of already knowing that.
Yeah, okay.
That would be three weeks and.
Yeah, and then we're in the first week of June.
Yeah.
Tom?
Can Andy appoint a stand in for him?
Proxy?
I don't see anything in the law, I mean, I think, I think what we do is we give the one week's notice. You post, we'll see what we can do and then we'll take it from there.
Yeah, seems like we ought to be able to make it work.
I could submit something.
Oh, like a sealed sign.
Email, be able to email?
Absent, sealed sign, absent hole from connection down there.
Let's try remote participation, I think that's, I think that's the best way to do it.
Except Andy's not going to be available for remote participation. Gotcha, okay, let's try that.
Yeah.
I'm sure we can.
That's what I'm saying, a signed seal thing, yeah. Maybe, yeah, maybe submit it to the town clerk.
And if the proxy is an available option, would you, do you have a proxy that you could nominate for us tonight?
Sure.
Okay.
The future, I'm just suggesting, oh, you have two votes.
Right, yeah, we just need to have a quorum, yeah.
Yeah, perfect, I didn't want to stress it.
Okay, all right, so do we, we want to agree that we're starting the meter running now for the week and we will, we will let David figure out the.
Let me work my magic.
The rest of it.
Let me do the magic that I do.
Yeah, okay. All right, and then, yeah, do we need a motion for that?
Second?
Okay, moved in second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. And then, since we've got Park and Rec here too, with Kathy's resignation is effective June thirtieth and there's some nuances about hiring in terms of how we move forward, David?
Yep.
So can you recap what the rules are?
The rules are this is a department head, so it has to be posted downstairs and published in the newspaper of general circulation.
Okay, and then who does the?
That would be the Select Board, would be the hiring and firing authority.
For Park and Rec?
Yep, yep.
We wouldn't have any involvement in that?
Oh, yeah, you make a recommendation.
Yeah, so you wouldn't be out of it, right, yeah.
Yeah, but you.
But then it comes back, back here, okay.
What about in terms of a temporary role until we found the successful candidate?
Temp position?
Yeah, interim.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a vendor relation, that's a vendor relationship, so sure, there's no trouble there.
But again, Kathy's on staff until June thirtieth, right? And if you don't mind my asking, do you have a lot of, are you going to be gone in June vacation?
I don't think I'm going to be gone much of it, I have some personal time that I'd like to use up.
Okay.
I have no specific plans.
Right, but this is also our, Kathy has kindly given us more notice than like a two week turnaround or something like that, so we can do that. But if we can get someone where she can do a little bit of transitioning, this is going right into our summer program, so.
Right.
That would be, yeah.
Okay, and the other thing, and I just want to.
Do you have someone in mind?
Yes.
The other thing I'd like to throw out too is one of the things we talked about last time is, you know, because of the budget situation we're in, when we do have turnover, it's a good time to kind of think about the programming going forward and, you know, reflecting on what the Park and Rec program is going to look like, what resources, are you all set for that?
No.
Well, what's your name?
Nothing.
Okay, so I would like to make a recommendation, though, that we don't post this position yet until we've had a chance to spend more time talking to Park and Rec about what the needs are going forward. Because it's not obvious to me that we need to replace the position with the number of hours that we're currently incurring right now. And I think we need to know more about programming, they've been very vocal about not having space needs met. So I just, I think it would behoove us to take a little bit of think time rather than just pull the trigger and plow forward.
I'd rather go forward with an interim, understanding the programs that they already have in place.
I'm not talking about the interim, yeah, not talking about the interim.
Okay.
Yeah.
Things, I don't want to stall it because we have time.
We also have an issue with the mall, so.
We should have somebody in place there.
Yeah, so fill them.
We have to.
Yeah, yeah, but just before that individual or before we actually post for a full-time benefited position again.
This position was approved in the fiscal year budget, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And that budget expires June thirtieth?
You have, you have.
July first to July first.
The position, the position's been funded already.
July first to July.
Or FY nineteen, so that's, so two Julys from now.
Two Julys from now.
Yeah.
Yeah, the fun thing is there, but again, what we're talking about, what I'm talking about is just not, just immediately plowing forward and saying, okay, here's the job, here's the job description, this is our pay scale, this is the number of hours, these are the benefits that are being applied. I think we, because I'm looking at everything we were just talking about, I think we really want to hone in on our priorities and does it make sense, I mean, the time, if, if, if any change is to be made, the time to make it is when there's natural attrition. So again, I'm just saying, before we post the job, you guys are going to bring in an interim. We've got until June thirtieth that we should probably have a conversation, a more focused conversation before the end of the fiscal year about it.
Before June thirtieth.
Which, oh, thirty, that.
Yeah. When you all get back from your vacations. You're always going.
Yeah, I was going to say, yeah. Yeah. Okay.
So I will see you next week.
Okay, and we'll figure out how to get Andy's vote in here.
And Andy will be here in spirit.
I doubt he will.
I doubt he will, yeah, yeah. Okay, anything else for Park and Rec?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, oh. I don't, I think I got in jail over there, yeah, that would be the right thing to do, thank you. Okay, so boards and committees update requests.
Try something.
David, am I supposed to read this or you?
Yes, that's for you.
So just go ahead and.
Try something new and different this year of being a little bit more active in terms of recruiting for our positions that are, that need to be reappointed for the coming fiscal year.
Okay, so the Select Board and the Town Clerk are requesting that all boards and committees update their members list. We will reappoint all boards and committees as needed at the end of June for the upcoming fiscal year to make this a smooth reappointment year. We'll be sending letters, emails to all boards and committees asking for the following information. The reorganization of board committee, so who's the chair, co-chair, alternates, any resignations, new members, terms, vacancies or non-acceptance of reappointments, any appointments to other committees that are required by the board. So for example, if the finance committee has an appointed member to the CPA, identify who that individual is and the best means of contacting the chair, cell phone, email, whatever. So plan is that we'll mail these out on May eighteenth, which is tomorrow, and we're asking all information to be returned by June fourteenth. So if there are any questions, please contact Jessica Spanknebel or Jennifer Sanders James. And they are thanking everyone in advance for their cooperation. Okay, anything else, David, on that?
Is there a way for us to get the openings listed in advance? I know we're waiting for these to come in there, but we know some of the locations where there's openings, if we can, in the recruiting phase of this, if we can point out some of the openings that are available.
Right, there is, there is a part of the website that talks about vacancies and positions open, so I'll make sure that that's been updated.
It's been on channel five like forever, most of the ones that are still open for one member.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll make sure we do that.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, David, highlights from your town administrator report?
Okay, so they're working on the Bay Road Bridge, it looks like it's going to be a sixteen week project, weather conditions permitting, and then they're going to replace that bridge completely in 2020. We're working on the town parking lot paving project, that procurement issue is ongoing and that project is expected to be done this summer. We're down to punch lists on the Route Nine widening and I know that they had a meeting concerning the parking lots over at the Legion and the town parking lot. The Route Nine widening 2021 update, this is, this is a kind of like a big deal. Last September, the Mass DOT came and met with the Select Board and described a project of widening Route Nine from Middle Street to East Street. And we talked about replacing water and sewer lines at a discount under there. At a stakeholders' meeting with Mass DOT last month, they described a project which was much larger in scope from Middle Street all the way to South Maple Street and beyond. This is an enormous opportunity for us to replace sewer lines, water lines and stormwater infrastructure at a steep discount. But just the magnitude of the project means that it's going to be a real challenge for the town.
Ballpark, we pay how much, three hundred thousand for a quarter of a mile?
It's like two hundred thousand a quarter of a mile, we're going to be returning at least seventy thousand dollars back on that project. And we probably saved an additional hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
But from here to the mall, prognosis, the number would be?
A hundred dollars a foot.
And how many feet?
Well, how many feet in a mile, so.
Five thousand two hundred and eighty?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that would be per line, so.
Per, per, per sewer line, per, per water line. And if it goes down both sides of the road, you need to take that into consideration also.
That's right.
Sewer line isn't that old to the mall, is it?
Five hundred thousand or more.
Five hundred thousand.
That's a one mile at a hundred dollars a mile.
You know, if they're going to change this into, into a whole capital project, then I really want to push for some grant money from the state or from federal.
Yeah.
I think, I think there's a couple of things going on, we're getting. I think, I think there's a couple of things going on. We're getting the heavy push to, to have a lot of ducks in a row by June first. That's just not gonna happen. The project of this magnitude, to have enough information available to Mass DOT so that they can have a twenty-five percent complete plan sometime in June, not doable. So, we need to bring them in and present to the Select Board exactly what their project is. I also think if they're not willing to defer the project or do this in, in smaller chunks, then we need some heavy hitters in our corner with funding. As you said, grants, state aid or federal aid that would, that we could qualify for.
Well, in university, I would hope that they would be a strong advocate because in large part, the traffic's heading in their direction.
I, I-
You know, we've spoken to both of our legislators. We've talked to Pioneer Valley Planning. I, I mean, everybody's on board with, with what's going on here and with the needs.
Mm-hmm.
But every time we turn around, District Two pulls a little stunt like this and throws the whole project in instead of another quarter or half a mile.
Yeah, cause you're talking three million dollars by the time you do water and sewer. It's gotta be three miles, and you're talking half a million a mile, one each. So, you're talking three million bucks. It's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money, it's a, it's a-
No, not a half a million a mile. A half a million for five miles.
No, no, no.
No.
You said a hundred dollars foot, and it's a mile, and we calculated for a mile. What's the actual distance?
Five thousand two hundred and eighty feet, so.
So, I'm a little light.
Three or four miles or something like that.
And is it, you said it's a hundred dollars a foot for every pipe that goes under there?
Yep.
So, it could be many hundreds of dollars for a foot.
Well, I figured two, one for water and one for sewer.
Right.
Yeah.
So, it's a million dollars a mile.
I mean, these are, these are back-of-the-envelope kind of calculations.
Yeah, that's how we start.
But we're, we're talking big numbers.
That's how we start.
You know, and when we had them in here, we discussed them getting that Bay Road Bridge done, them possibly getting the wires bridge done. You know, the island of Hadley here around the town hall, before they dig up another section of road, they really had to fix some of the bridges and some of the other access roads to get to forty thousand cars a day around Route Nine, you know? The next section is not gonna be as easy as diverting traffic down Bay Road and East Street, you know?
So, so I, I have asked for-
Well, Chief, am I correct or not? You're asking?
You've asked what, David?
I've asked for a meeting with Mass DOT. I've asked them to come back and meet with the Select Board. We can talk about this. You touched on the Russellville Brook. That is on the tip for 2019. That's a nine hundred thousand dollar project that the state is gonna pay for.
I mean, they took that whole thing over. That was a good thing.
That was a very good thing.
Okay, so you just sent that email today, said more to come from DOT, right?
More, more to come.
What was their reasoning why they wanna extend all the way to, say, South Maple Street now versus sections?
It sounded-
Cost savings or for them?
I actually don't, I actually don't know. They, it was the first we'd heard of it.
I think federal money's gonna be released to the state and that's gonna be part of the state's big picture. That's-
They're baking on infrastructure funding?
Yeah, that's, that's what it sounds like. And, and again, when they were here, they said if it's ready to run with, that they were going to do it. So, that's, that's probably, probably why they're pushing this ahead a little bit.
But we live in the real world and the president of the Senate is from Amherst, so, I mean, we've never had as much juice as we do right now. So, if this project is getting done because Senator Rosenberg has an ability to get it done, he's got strong ties to the University of Massachusetts, and I'm sure he would love it done sooner rather than later. They worked very hard on what they're trying to do, and I think that's probably where the world is ending up.
Right. So, we wanna take advantage of as many opportunities as possible and partnering with Mass DOT is going to be a huge savings to the ratepayers and the taxpayers. But we wanna do this right and we wanna do it as completely as we can and as rationally as we can. So, more, more to follow.
Okay. Anything else from your report?
The roundabout, it just, I saw that was part of the overall prospectus as well.
Yeah.
When is that slated to be done?
At the Coolidge.
Yes, at the Coolidge Bridge.
Twenty eighteen, twenty, twenty nineteen.
Thank you.
Where are we gonna put the woman in?
The bridge.
Over the bridge.
Northampton side of the bridge.
Damon Road.
They rejected the flyover idea and now we're going with a roundabout.
Can we take care of fire, police on that side of the bridge?
Not us.
No.
Not us. The town lane's in the middle of the bridge. Actually, the sign's on Hadley's-
Thank you.
Anything else, David?
Okay, roofs and HVAC, fire substation updates. Things are moving along. We, we should mention that the Historic Commission has raised a question about the status of the site of the fire station. That's something that we're reviewing with council. Basically, I think our fate is in the hands of the Supreme Judicial Court, and they should be making a ruling this summer which should provide a clearer, more relevant case law than we currently have right now.
Could've loved that as far as-
It hasn't been pushed though. I mean, there was a letter that was sent to us, but there's been no push.
Right.
Commonwealth Compact IT, we got the grant, fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, that's a priority.
Yep.
All right, just running through here, I'll let you read all the details here. Sewer clarifier up, uh, update. We had our, our pre-construction meeting today. The notice to proceed was sent out on May third, so the project is due to be completed, completed no later than October thirty-first, and we're hoping for the end of September. So, that project is now underway. Special time meeting, we talked a little bit about that, but we're already beginning to work on the issues there. End of year spending controls, the departments have been notified. Five-year capital plan update, the departments have been notified that the five-year capital plan needs to be updated, and that's due back on June thirtieth. Opet bactuarial, our unfunded liability dropped by four hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars. Very good news. The audit is expected to be completed by base twenty-sixth. This is our annual audit, and I've tentatively scheduled a presentation for June seventh with Melanson and Heath.
Can we get a listing on when the quarterly bills will be going out, the actual dates and when they'll be going out, please?
We have to finish the reading first.
Just when, just tell me-
Next week or two.
So, not when the billing's going out, so that we can, if we need to notify the citizens for upcoming town meetings-
Right.
So that we can have some prospectus as to when it's, when it's gonna be available with our postage.
I was, I'm glad that you raised that because it was something I was thinking about as I was driving on the New Jersey Turnpike yesterday, is that we need, that we should do a prepared insert with the, the water sewer bills so that people realize that it's a quarterly.
Quarterly bill.
Uh, and this is the reason why we're doing it.
And not that it's Christmas in May.
That's right.
Yeah, and then it's three more months.
Right.
Yeah, my water bills have what it normally is, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, good idea.
All right.
Okay.
There are other details there, but I think I touched on the highlights.
Okay. We do have an executive session scheduled tonight, so is there anything else before we go to announcements?
Two more, your hit list on your Route Nine. The no turn on red signs.
Letter was sent?
Letter was sent.
Yeah, okay.
And, um, I don't know, I mentioned it to Marlo, I don't know if he remembered or not, but they put a pedestrian sign right in front of the flashing light in front of the superintendent's office that blocks the flashing light for school zone.
Mm-hmm.
Whether they can lower it or move it. I think it needs to be addressed.
I think we need more of those, of those pedestrian alerts out there.
Yeah.
I've seen some, I know that we had a very bad traffic accident involving somebody at Most Holy Redeemer last month who really got hit by a car and is still in hospital, I think.
They're not even slowing down with those new signs.
Yeah. So, I think we need more signs out there. We need some sort of illumination. I know that those crosswalks are slated for upgrades, but I think that's gonna take a couple of years to, for Mass DOT to do that kind of work.
Well, and the other thing that's happening at the corner here is they put the sign back up that says no turn on red. You've got two lanes, and then on the right-hand side, it says left lane, turn only.
Yeah, yeah.
And you got people pulling straight, and even though-
Are they gonna-
That isn't how the traffic pattern ever works.
Yeah.
They're both merging into one lane.
Are they gonna finish putting the permanent markers in the road soon? That's, that's the major issue with that.
Yeah, there's nothing painted to say.
Yeah, I think that's on the punch list with the project.
Okay.
All right, I think that'll alleviate that problem. But again, the no turn on red sign is pretty important because when they were gone, there really was no issues and we went through it with the chief and, and I thought we had decided to, to make sure that they were removed. We voted on Wednesday and they put them up on Friday.
They're bigger. Bigger than they were.
Yeah.
Probably they put them back up if they made them twice the size.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else before we, we close out here?
Couple of announcements.
Announcements?
Joyce?
Joyce, oh.
Okey-dokey. We'll start off with condolences to two families in town, to the family of Marjorie Fidenkevich. We'd like to send our condolences to them, and to the family of William Pelisir. Our condolences to them also, lifelong residents of Hadley.
Upcoming events, we have the Tractor Pool Contest this weekend at North Hadley Sugar Shack, May twentieth. We have the asparagus and strawberry supper at the First Congregational Church that evening, the twentieth. The Public Forum for the Senior Center Preliminary Design is May twenty-fifth against, that's next Thursday. There'll be one in the afternoon at three o'clock and one in the evening at six o'clock. Please attend. Asparagus Festival on the Common will be on June third. Chicken to Go for Friends of Council on Aging is June eleventh, and Polish Dinner at Most Holy Redeemer Young Men's Club is gonna be on July thirtieth. Upcoming events.
The Pokemass, too.
And a Pokemass, that's right.
Pokemass. Here is the June third festival for the Hadley As, Hadley Asparagus.
Asparagus.
Yeah, we're the capital of the world, so, June third on the Town Common. We also have the Hadley Memorial Day Parade at the American Legion. That starts at ten forty-five for those that will be going to the cemeteries with the main parade at two PM. Everybody will meet at the Legion, and if you need to, you can sign up to march. You can bring a float. You just need to contact some people, and that would be John Karish, Tom Stilarski, the Legion, Kathy Zaterka, and Gene Baxter. So, all of them can help you, assist you in helping to make our parade great as it usually is. And then we also have Hadley Town Departments can compete for bragging rights in Hadley's first annual cornhole tournament. And that's going to be which department is the best in town. Come find out. Friday, June twenty-third, rain date is Friday, June thirtieth, hosted by the Goodwin Memorial Library at our Summer Reading Kickoff Party, two thousand seventeen. Five o'clock, open tournament for kids of all ages, two to hundred and two, and six fifteen Town Departments Championship. Double elimination, trophies presented to two top teams, two people per team, one team per town department. Free hot dogs and candy, cotton candy is gonna be served. Bring a picnic lunch, and your whole family. Sign up in advance to register. Call Tom Waskevich. He's also at Waskevich at U-M-E-X-T dot UMass dot edu.
Edu?
Edu.
E-D. I'm sorry. My Polish words just kicked in. Edu.
E-E-D-U.
Dot E-D-U.
Dot E-D-U.
That's UMass Education.
Yes, it is.
Edu is better. Contact Edu.
All right, anything else tonight?